Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one. Call a meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor and council, just a couple of brief notes. First, have Councilmember Christianson's unable to make the meeting tonight. And with that, we will have to table item eleven. Because there needs to be a full vote. With that charter change. And so just note that we'll have to, we'll be asking the council to table it at that item. So you have to actually take action on it. So there's no necessary changes to the agenda, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention at the beginning of the meeting.
Intertain a motion to approve the council agenda.
I'll make a motion, a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon, Brandon to approve the agenda. Any other? Roll call. Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Convulsations by Hunter's Ridge Church.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to begin the meeting in prayer. So let's, let's borrow heads together for a moment. Gracious God and Heavenly Father, I thank you for the opportunity that they have to meet tonight. We pray, Lord, for our leaders here, every one of the leaders here and all the time and effort and work they put in. It is much appreciated and much, we, we, we thank you for them, Lord, this community of Hutchinson. And thank you, God, that we can have government that I pray will help us live good and peaceful lives. Lord, I want to say thank you for the community as well and all the work that goes in. The beautiful neighborhoods, the many new businesses that have come in. The optimism that is here for this community and this city. We just pray, Lord, for the prosperity of Hutchinson. And thank you for each one who is contributing and being a part of that. Lord, I think about just some of the things that are on this agenda and think about the generosity. The donation, two thousand dollars from Village Ranch to the police department. We thank you for our police departments, our fire department as well, all of them, Lord, and all the work that they do. Think about the gift from Westland Associates for the Hutchinson Parks Department, new playground equipment. Lord, just for generosity and the, these kinds of gifts that are given. Lord, I want to pray too that you'll bless the group tonight. Give them wisdom in crafting policies, Lord, that would reflect wisdom in, in their work. And Lord, as we are, are entering a new season in our, in our nation with new, new, new people in our, in our government, our president, vice president on down. Lord, we know that many are excited about these new ones coming in. We also know some are disappointed with those who have been brought in. But Lord, above all, we just pray for wisdom and strength and humility to lead. On a national level, I pray for that even on our local level here too. So guide them in all that they do. Lord, I pray this in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Next, a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Sebastian, you want to do the honors?
Be a pleasure. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you, Dave. Next, we have recognition of gifts, donations and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? All right, we do have a couple of resolutions. Resolution number one, five, two, seven, four, resolution accepting two thousand dollars donation from the Village Ranch to the Hutchinson Police Department towards purchase of new radar. And resolution number one, five, two, seven, five, resolution accepting one hundred dollars donation from the Westland Associated Associates Incorporated to Hutchinson Parks Department towards new playground equipment at Hutchinson J.C.'s Woman's Park.
I'll make a motion to accept those donations.
Aye.
Motion by Chad, second by Brandon to accept those two donations. Any other discussion?
I did have one thing, Matt. Something to think about is like the Hutchinson J.C. Women aren't a group anymore, like back in the mid nineties. And before, like the J.C. Women and J.C.'s were two separate groups, but then it's been coed since the late nineties. So maybe we could resell the naming rights to that park to a different civic group if, if we could raise some more money to do that before this project, perhaps.
I just let you know, Chad, that we must be thinking along the same lines because actually there's already something in the works along the, along that same idea. So I would anticipate probably in the next month or two, there might be something coming forward to the city council, so.
We've always been right here, Matt, so there we go.
I thought for sure somebody was gonna say, great minds think alike, but.
Well, thank you, Gary.
That goes without saying, I thought, but thanks for pointing it out.
All right, sounds good. Any other discussion? Roll call, Brandon.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Say, Gary, we do actually have one recognition that Kent would like to note, so.
All right.
Yeah, quick, yeah, since we, it looks like we got a little time this evening. Been meaning to do this since mid-November, so, ah, and seeing that John's here and before he slides out this evening, been trying to do it at the end of a meeting, so we'll do it now. Early, like Eric said earlier, well, earlier last November, APWA, American Public Works Association, the Minnesota Chapter solicited nominations for manager, director of the year across the state within that organization. Some of us in Public Works put together an application for Mr. John Olson. This was the first time we've actually, we actually applied. And John was selected as Minnesota Chapter APWA Manager Director of the Year. That was awarded at the APWA's conference in November, so. John's here this evening. Yeah, I don't know if there's much to say. Obviously, everybody knows, that's familiar with Public Works and how we, we function within Public Works. John is the, the glue that holds us all together. John is always tweaking, always fine tuning our engine. Trying to create a better mousetrap, whether it's a snow removal or the variety operations that John oversees, obviously streets, cemetery, airport, hats, stormwater utility. And, you know, he, he basically does all, all of our public works budgeting and the budget preparation and monitoring through the year. Whether it's engineering, water, wastewater and such. So with that, I just want to congratulate John again and, and recognize him. Great job. John's had an outstanding career here at the City of Hutchinson and a couple of other spots before he arrived here in Hutchinson, so. John would come up, please? Yeah. This is the certificate, what it looks like. Nothing fancy, kind of in Public, Public Works fashion with that.
Yeah, I just want to thank Kent and the other staff who who put, put the application in and it's, it's humbling. But it's an affirmation, I think, of, of the work, trying to do the best I can to serve this community. And that's my heart and that's what I try to do every day. So thanks for that. When I did get it during the, the online annual, or the meeting, COVID even affects these kinds of things, but I said, you know, one of the things that it says, when you have a list of accomplishments that they read off, it, it means I've been around here a long time. So been in this game thirty years and so this is a, a very, a much of a highlight for me. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations to John Olson. Anything else?
Chad, do you want to say something?
Yeah, just congrats. I'm like, appreciate all the work that John does. I mean, his, his group does a great job and it's nice to get some recognition.
Chase Chad, you didn't even bring up the snow flowing deal, Main Street. All right. Citizens addressing the council, Matt, is there anybody that wants to address council?
Nope, nobody is running up, so.
All righty, approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Oh, second. Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one minutes. Any other discussion? Not Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is consent agenda. This will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. He is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Three M Club on April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one at the Three M Club Building and on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-one at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. B is approval of purchase of leaf vacuum. C is approval of Federal Aviation Administration entitlement transfer. D is approval of amending resolution number one, five, two, six, one, attached, attachment A. The two thousand twenty-one position classification table. And E is appointment of deb card to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee to August of two thousand twenty-two. And F is claims appropriations and contract payments. Does anybody have anything they want to pull off for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, second. Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Roll call, Brandon?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We do have a public hearing, but can we do Creekside Soil and year-end report, Matt?
We've got, he's got sixteen minutes, so that's maybe, I think it's good to go, so.
All right, sounds good. Mr. Andy?
We'll give it a go. Chad, we'll do our best to meet your demand. I mean, request fifteen minutes. Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the most part, all of you are familiar with me, Brandon, Andy Kosick here, manager of Creekside. Here tonight to give you a year-end report, twenty-twenty year-end report from Creekside that involves the, the refuse and the compost fund. So starting in right away to try to move along here, have our mission statement listed, just to read that off you real quick. Creekside will provide an environmentally responsible alternative to disposing of city and county organics and area landfills. This will be done in a manner that is self-sustaining and provides optimal benefits, economic and otherwise, to the residents of Hutchinson. Creekside values innovation, market flexibility, incorporating best business practices, establishing partnerships, meeting or exceeding customer requirements, maintaining good relationships with neighbors and being recognized as a community asset by the residents of Hutchinson and McCloud County. And the statement was put together ten, probably even going on fifteen years ago, and I just feel it's, it's something worth mentioning. We value it very much and I feel that we have adhered to it quite well over the years, so. Just moving along. Starting with the refuse fund, for, for those that aren't overly familiar with what the refuse fund really consists of, this is a snapshot of a definite, excuse me, the definition. Through the refuse fund, the city charges its residents monthly garbage fee for the collection and disposable municipal solid waste, otherwise known as MSW, and source separated organic materials, also otherwise known as SSOM. The garbage fees collected from residents are used to pay the contracted hauling and collection service for both MSW and SSOM. The landfill disposal charges for MSW and the expenditures for the source separated operations out at Creekside, including building improvements and capital equipment purchases. The MSW is disposed of at a local landfill at the expense of the refuse fund on a cost-per-tonne contract rate, whereas the source separated material is collected, that is collected, is received at Creekside where it's composted into a soil product and is currently being used by other city departments. There's not really a whole lot to report on in terms of the refuse fund. Really, the, really metric we have is, is the tonnages that the fund really pertains to, and that's the MSW and the SSOM materials. So the top black is the, the MSW tonnages over the last ten, eleven years. I really don't have a lot to report on that. I thought there would be more of a trend in that, but as you can see, it's bouncing all over the place with really no explanation as to why. The green is our source separated tonnage received. There's an obvious trend, a downward trend. I think a few of the notables mentioned there, back in two thousand ten, when the leaf vacuum service started, we started to see a decline, somewhat kind of leveled out into thirteen, fourteen, and then the single sort recycling started up in, in two thousand fifteen, and we've seen another downward trend start. Looking at this year's tonnages for both MSW and, and the SSOM, they're, they're up a bit over last year. And I think as far as, as we can tell, I mean, that's predominantly or mostly pandemic related. People are just at home more, you know, in terms of the MSW doing more house cleaning. Whereas on the source separated side, they're just more time to do yard work and what have you, generating organic tonnage. The blue down on the bottom, sorry, not that quick. The blue, the blue down on the bottom is the, is the reject of the residual material, removed from the source separated tons that we receive. This is done at the, at the end of the process through the screening, at the, in the screening process. Over the course of the years, aside from little, a few blurbs, excuse me, blurbs on the radar earlier on, we maintain about an eighty-five percent recovery rate on that material, meaning fifteen percent of the total tons received end up doing, do going to the landfill as, as contamination, so. Go ahead, move on and on. So just to look at the refuse from a numbers perspective, twenty-twenty, I should know the twenty-twenty numbers, the middle column there are preliminary numbers. They won't be audited until, I believe it's maybe even as late as April. But the reviews, revenues for the most part are locked in. We did, we did close out twenty-twenty down a tick in terms of revenues at one point two eight-six million, down two and three-quarter percent from nineteen. And the majority of that is, is basically interest earnings on, on investments, services. Fees charged have, are actually showing an increase, but there was a decrease in, in just sale of fixed assets as well as the, the decrease in, in interest earnings. Year-end expenditures were down proportionally as well. Three point nine percent under last year's, showing a net revenue of a positive two thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars for twenty-twenty at this point. I just picked out, you know, the, the bigger ticket items, the depreciation, the capital and the transfer. You know, those are included up above in the year-end expenditures, but if you, if you look at, you know, a cash flow viewpoint, yeah, back in that hundred and forty thousand dollar non-cash item of depreciation out of the expenditures up above shows a, would show about a two hundred and forty-two thousand dollar cash flow, which is relative, is, is, is good. Obviously, anytime you're positive, it's good. But capital is a little slower year, a little down year. We did budget a hundred and eighty thousand. Some of that wasn't done. That'll be pushed off into most likely twenty-twenty-one or maybe even twenty-twenty-two as we look at implementing a new, new source separated composting operation system, so. And just to note the, the fifty-five thousand dollar transfer to the tree disease infestation mitigation fund since two thousand ten, when that contribution or that fund started, the refuse fund has contributed six hundred and five thousand dollars. Moving on to the compost fund, same thing here for those not totally aware of, of what that all entails. Here's a quick definition. Creekside's compost fund serves as a drop-off site for compostable and recyclable materials such as logs, brush, yard waste and clean concrete and blacktop and no charge. With these materials, Creekside produces, markets and distributes bulk and bag compost mixtures, as well as a variety of bulk and bag colored mulches to local customers and to distributors with a current sales territory of thirteen states from the Midwest to the intermountain west. Creekside sells these products under three labels, the Splinter Grill brand, the Creekside brand and the Wonder Blend brand. Creekside also sells horticultural or supplies horticultural materials along with aggregates to various city departmental projects at a reduced cost. So it's starting to look at the operation, starting on the front side with the incoming materials. The, the graph here shows just yard waste and wood waste, which predominantly makes up the vast majority of the materials received. Twenty-twenty, we received thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty tons of yard waste and wood waste materials. Of that thirteen nine fifty, just shy of five thousand ton was generated by the City of Hutchinson residents via, you know, whether it be commercial, whether it be the Public Works Vacuum Service on, and, and commercial accounts. So looking down towards the bottom of the page there, kind of gives a little better breakout of where these materials are coming from. We're basically about a fifty-fifty split, forty-nine to fifty-one percent in terms of yard waste to wood waste, but the City of Hutch generates thirty-six percent of our total tonnage received. The remaining municipalities in the county of McCloud County generate twenty-one percent of the total received. The City of St. Cloud, thirty-six percent. And the City of Wilmer would receive a thousand seven percent, otherwise, in other words, a thousand tons of, of wood waste materials. So what do we do with all these materials? Well, of course, we process it, we bag it and we sell it. That's, that's what we're all about. Looking at twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty's bag sales volume, wow, we had an exceptionally good year in terms of sales. We closed out the year, as you can see, at one million, just north of one million six hundred and forty thousand bags, up three hundred and, over three hundred and sixty-four thousand bags from last year. Clearly, this wasn't anticipated, it wasn't budgeted. I don't recall exactly what our, our budgeted or our forecasted number was, but it certainly wasn't that. For twenty-twenty-one, we're projecting more of a modest projection, just in basically an increase over twenty-nineteen. You know, is, is twenty-twenty going to be the norm? We hope so, but we feel that there are two things, two major things came into play. Obviously, was the, one was the nice spring weather we had and then the other was the pandemic. Unfortunately, in the grand scheme of things, but fortunately for us with the stay-at-home order, people were doing a lot of do-it-yourself projects. And that, that seemed to, I shouldn't say seemed, but that was seen across the market. Sales were up quite drastically across the board.
It was the first nice, nice spring we've had in four years, you know, like we've had blizzards in May the last three years and this year is beautiful out, so. I think people are just kind of frustrated and putting big spring projects off, but you know, it's just nice to have some nice weather for a change.
Absolutely. It was well, well overdue, you know, and that's one thing, you know, hopefully, fingers crossed, we see that again this year, but you can't, can't bank on it, can't count on it, so. So that bag sales volume, what does that correlate to in terms of yards needed? Twenty-twenty with that one point six million sold boils down to about fifty thousand yards worth of material that needs to be packaged, processed and packaged. At our site currently, we have the capacity to produce approximately twelve thousand yards of compost or soil material and about thirty thousand yards of wood material. So, you know, that obviously amounts to forty-two thousand yards total. The remaining balance, which is predominantly compost, that is needed for bag sales is, is purchased from outside vendors. So a little breakdown of the bag sales volume, twenty-twenty, I chart on the left, obviously you can see the increase over twenty-nineteen's numbers, but the more notable difference is, is the, the increase in, if you want to, kind of want to call it market share, but production makeup or sales makeup. Last year, we had eight hundred and seventy thousand bags of Creekside brands. Again, that's the Splinter Grill Creekside Wonder Blend, which made up about sixty-eight percent of our production, whereas in twenty-twenty-two, we sold over one point three million bags and which made up eighty percent of our total sales. The, in the red, the private label, you know, those are customers that have been on board with us for some time. Needless to say, they weren't exactly pleased with us this last spring, just because we've prioritized, focused on our own brands. But I do believe we have a pretty solid plan here in place to prepare ourselves for, in the event that we have another phenomenal spring, so. Just a couple of twenty-twenty mentionables here, like we just spoke about, the bag sales market, see the projections twenty-twenty, in twenty-twenty due to the ideal spring weather and the stay-at-home order. Big con sales, the, the product produced from our concrete and blacktop. The aggregate exceed far exceeded projections for the second straight year, selling thirty thousand plus tons once again. The unfortunate thing is inventory is depleted, was depleted late last fall, so we're starting twenty-twenty out basically empty and may not have any of that material available until late twenty-twenty-one, possibly even into twenty-twenty-two. This was noted in the, in the twenty-twenty-one budget, but it's certainly going to be felt that thirty thousand tons accounts for approximately, give or take, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of sales revenue, so. That one, that will hurt, that will hurt just a little bit. We also received, the compost fund received a new compost screener in May, and then we also redesigned, refreshed the, the Creekside Business logo and Creekside brand of bags, with the, the business logos being on the left side there and obviously the bags on the right, but. The business logos being on the left side there and obviously the bags on the right, but um. It is time for for some updating, some modernization, time for the the ducks and cattails to go and. Hopefully get into what we feel is a little more sleeker look, um, as far as the business logo goes. And then bags, bag-wise, that was a a much-needed improvement. Um, this is obviously just one of the six products that was redesigned, uh, the other products have a similar look. Is that that new design just color-coded for the for the different products, for the potting soil, the compost, compost with manure, sand, what have you, so. Pretty excited about that hitting hitting the market this spring. Looking at the finances for the compost fund, again, twenty twenty was a a really good year in terms of sales revenue. We closed out as again, I'll back up just to mention twenty twenty prelim numbers. Um, revenue should be pretty well set with expenditures possibly increasing slightly here in the next couple of weeks as we close out. Any remaining invoices that are expensed back to twenty twenty, but. Twenty twenty closed out at just north of three point two million dollars in sales, uh, or six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars ahead of twenty nineteen. Uh, that increase boils down to a twenty-three point eight five percent increase, which is. Great, to say the least, year-end expenditures increased proportionally as well, closing out at three point four million. Just over one, three point four million dollars, um. Should know twenty twenty was a rather large year in terms of capital expenditures for Creekside or for the compost fund. I do have them again separated out down below, I'll touch on them here in a second, but, um, so with the year-end, with the net. Revenue showing a loss of two hundred and eight thousand dollars. Again, pulling out the non-cash item depreciation, two hundred and sixty grand and take into consideration the nearly five hundred thousand dollars in capital. The 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 good year in terms of sales was was well needed. Um, but obviously well received, that goes without saying, but certainly helped, um. Swallow the five hundred thousand dollar capital that that was expensed this year. Gross profit margin closed out at thirty, just over thirty-four and a half percent for the year, pretty much right in line with our budget, um, but a little over two percent over last year. Transfer, hundred and ten thousand dollar transfer to the general fund since two thousand and nine, when that contribution started a little over one point one million dollars has been contributed. To the general fund. So just looking ahead here briefly for twenty twenty-one objectives, um, as I mentioned earlier, looking at implementing a new composting process for the source separated organics. Uh, at this point, that's looking to be a covered aerated static pile or otherwise known as a casp system, casp system. There'll be more information coming before before the council here in the upcoming weeks to. To fill you in a little further on that, um, part of that system change is to. Formulate an educational campaign for the curbsides source separated program to further minimize the contamination, I mean. Couple of years ago, we had a Green Corps member on board who started, you know, basically laid the groundwork out for that, it's been tough. To to keep moving on that, but we need to get something put in place here sooner than later, just to. Be able to turn that material into a marketable material versus just stockpiling it and. Leaving it up for other city departments to use, which is perfectly fine, it's still going to a good use, but if we can generate some revenue off of it, obviously that would be more ideal. Uh, continue to strive to increase bags per hour production rates through staff training and equipment upgrades. Uh, this was actually an objective for ourselves that I gave ourselves in 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 twenty twenty or back in nineteen for twenty twenty. And we were able to increase the soil production rates by eleven point three percent or ninety-one bags per hour. To eight hundred and ninety-five bags an hour over twenty nineteen's numbers and then similar. Similar percentage increase on the mulch production, uh, which equates to sixty bags per hour. Up to five hundred and thirty-two bags per hour over nineteen's. With that, basically, obviously anytime you can increase, be more efficient, it 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 boils down to increasing or benefiting the bottom line. But where that puts us in terms of production, um, as we stand right now here, as of, I believe it was last week when I last looked at it, we. We're approximately twenty-four, if not even, I'm sure twenty-five, twenty-six days ahead of production schedule from where we were the same point last year. So I mean, it may not sound like much, but that ninety-one bags an hour, you know, an eight-hour day, that's seven hundred and twenty bags on the soil side. Well, that's a, there's a thousand eighty bags on a truckload, so nearly a truckload a day extra, three quarters of a truckload, I guess, for, put it in layman's terms. Additional definitely puts us in a better position going into the spring season. So we'll, uh, continue to work on that, I don't know how much more we can squeak out, but we're certainly going to try. And then last but not least, goes without saying, obviously, but everybody just stays healthy, um, keep our staff safe, keep them healthy, I mean, obviously without them. We can't do what we do. So. That's about all I have, any questions?
No, thanks, Andy, you covered it well.
Thank you.
Alrighty, uh, we do have a public hearing, uh, for wastewater headwork improvement project. Leading number three, project number twenty-one dash oh three, and we have, uh. Couple resolutions underneath there, we have resolution number one, five, two, seven, six, resolution ordering improvement and. Preparation of plans and specifications and resolution number one, five, two, seven, seven. Resolution approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for grids.
Right.
Good evening.
Yes, uh, we're here to administer a public hearing, uh, for wastewater, uh, treatment facility headworks improvement project, uh, letting number three. Uh, this year, uh, what I want, I want to make note of, uh, something that was in your packet at the last meeting, there was, uh, when we ordered the hearing for this evening. Uh, there was an engineering report and a brief feasibility study, which primarily consisted of the, uh, the cost estimation. And, uh, just wanted to make note of, uh, the total estimated project cost hasn't changed at just under five point three million dollars. But the, uh, the funding, uh, discussing with, uh, Andy Reid, our funding equation changed a little bit, so now we're estimating. Three point five million in bonding dollars versus four point two million, uh, which was published last time. Uh, that would result in the wastewater funds contribution going up from roughly one point one million dollars to about one point eight, so. Andy's looking at, you know, bonding as an alternative, uh, to support this project and possibly the project, the skate improvements project that we're going to talk about later on this evening. So nothing, um, major there, uh, wastewater reserve funds are healthy, uh, now as we, uh, as we, uh, finished out twenty twenty, so. Uh, with that, uh, we have a brief presentation that Tim Gradkey, wastewater supervisor is going to work through. And then we'll talk about where we're at project delivery-wise, uh, we do have some work to do. Uh, we received some news, uh, just in the last week or so, so we'll talk about that when, uh, Tim, uh, finishes up with the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks Kent, um, good evening mayor and council. Um, yeah, like I said, this project has been in the works, uh, we've been hard at work last year over twenty twenty. Um, gathering information, looking at different things, uh. Trying to evaluate the whole process of this, what this headworks improvement project's going to entail. And mostly there's three main things, uh, we're addressing the flow splitting. Uh, between the processes at the plant since the addition of the MBR. Uh, some screening with some old screens from the original plant. And the non-existence of grit removal equipment, so, uh, with that, we'll move forward. For new council members, I will, uh, introduce myself, Tim Gradkey, I'm the manager of the waste treatment plant. Um, this is my team, we do a lot with a a few people. So, uh, going from left to right, it's myself, Eric Moore is the lead, uh, maintenance mechanic. Uh, Matthew Keller is our water wastewater technician. He works, uh, both plants, it's kind of a entry-level position, but he's been with us for three years now. John Kent is our wastewater maintenance operator. Deb Paulson manages the lab and also operates. And Randy Check is the, uh, main wastewater operator, senior operator. Uh, this is, uh, showing some of the original design here as it exists today, it's a little busy and hard to follow. And without pointer or cursor to kind of point out things on here, mainly what we're addressing. Is, uh, when the wastewater comes from the main lift stations into the plant. How it's received at the preliminary treatment building. And that goes through that treatment, so we're addressing some older, original screening. Uh, equipment that is in need of replacement, uh, as I said, the grit, uh. The grit separation, which partly is not existent on the original side of the plant. And then changing where the flows are split between the ditch and the MBR process. Which was originally before screening and grit removal, which we want to put that after both, so. All the wastewater coming into plant will be designed to go first through screens, then through grit removal and then be split between the processes. So addressing some of the issues that we are seeing, um, like I said, this project's. Has incorporates a lot of different solutions to a lot of things that we're seeing. Um, have been some design issues from the start, but. Now have been com- uh, compounded over time and also with, uh, the increased use of wipes materials. So one of the current issues is the hats lift station, uh, this contributes to, uh, surges in flow at the headworks of the plant. So with the oversizing of this, uh, this lift station was designed to handle the growth, uh, future growth of the. City to the south side of the town. And so it was sized appropriately at that time to, you know, last a long time. Uh, however, you, you know, we failed to see a lot of that growth on that end, so. Uh, the wastewater coming into this lift station is pretty minimal, but yet the pumps are sized, uh, pretty large. So when those pumps kick in, they give us a about a fifty percent increase in flow to the headworks of the plant. Which causes intermittent, you know, three to five-minute spikes every fifteen minutes of flow. Oh, and that's hard to deal with, so we're going to try to put in. A half-size diameter line over to the plant from this and actually downsize one of the pumps. So that, uh, we can lower that increase in flow and, uh, smooth it all a little more. Another issue is, uh, we brought forward in the past, you've seen our efforts to. Uh, deal with this headworks wet well that's on the roof of the preliminary building. Uh, I've introduced this before where last year, we had a couple of sessions where we cleaned out all the, uh, wipes material and grit that. Uh, naturally accumulated in this tank due to the, you know, original design of it. And, uh, the original design just kind of lent itself to settling this material out, but had no way of of removing it from the structure, so. Um, we're going to design around this wet well and get rid of it. Another one, uh, like I said, that wet well contributed to, um, as you've known, uh, two valves now. In that piping that leads into that vessel being clogged with wipes. One being eight-inch in diameter, uh, the one in the foreground there being ten inches, which was taken care of last year. Um, and then also issues with our main lift station pump impellers getting clogged with these wipes also. As I referred to the screening, these are the, uh, screens from the original plant, these are called static screens. Uh, they're not self, uh, cleaning and, uh, they have a real small diameter, so being not self-cleaning, they tend to plug up. Uh, quite readily and especially with the new introduction of wipes materials and how they shred and turn into fibers. Um, we need to replace these and we're going to go to something more like the, uh, rotating drum screens that are at the MBR plant. The other issue, as I stated, grit removal, um, we've brought forward pictures and reports of us having to clean. Um, up to four to five feet of grit accumulated in our oxidation ditch, as you could see there, uh. Bobcat down, removing some of that, uh, accumulated grit. Um, you know, when you only have twelve feet of freeboard and four feet of it is taken up by silt in the bottom. That, uh, limits your treatment capacity, so, uh, we did this, uh, a year ago and, um, we were in a process of doing the other ditch. Um, this fall when weather kicked in and we weren't able to get it completed, so that will wrap up in the spring. So the project overview, um, to hit the highlights, uh, we're going to install smaller hats, lift station pump and force main. To better moderate those spikes in flow experience at the headworks. Eliminate the influent wet well, um, replace it with a distribution pipe, uh. Where you can wheel, the water will be distributed to any number of five screens operating parallel. Replace the existing, existing static screens with rotary drum screens that include an automatic spray water system for self-cleaning. Replace the existing grit removal systems where we have three vessels with one fine grit removal system. Yeah, construct a new splitter box that will divide the flow to the secondary processes after total screening and grit removal. Increase the capacity of the, uh, equalization base and lift station. So that we can have full plant flow redundancy and, uh, influence that has been preliminarily treated will be sent there instead of bypassing. The screening and will also replace the original deteriorated HVAC unit, uh, and that part of the building. With a new rooftop unit and, uh, better airflow. So here's part of the solutions, again, this is a little hard to see with the size of it. Um, but the dark lines basically are some of the changes and additions to that building. Um, up in the upper right-hand corner is where we're redirecting our four force main pipes. Uh, instead of going into the headworks wet well, we're going to put them into a header pipe. Uh, as you go to the left, that header pipe will come over, it'll feed, uh, three new rotary screens, which are very similar. To the two rotary screens that were put in for the, uh, MBR project. So this will let us put any number of screens from one to five in service at any time. And can pick between which screens are operating, so it gives us really good redundancy. Uh, after that, the water will, uh, go out to, uh, downward. To the new addition, which will be the protrusion a- at the bottom of the page and that will be a new, uh. Capture splitter box, it'll go through, uh, the snail-looking thing there will be the new grit separator. And then it will overflow to three, uh, slide gates, which will divide the, uh, cleaned wastewater. Into the two process or three processes, the MBR, the oxidation ditch and the EQ system. So here's just an example, on the left is the original, uh, Baycore, uh, rotary drum screens, which are in place for the MBR system. And, uh, on the right is the example of what we feel, you know, the JWC brand, which will probably be. Uh, heavily looked at for this project, uh, Baycore is. A Ca- Canadian company and they've changed hands quite a bit and we've had problems getting parts. Uh, the existing screens work pretty well, but, uh, we're just not going to go with something that's a a little less, uh, supported. So again, here's the, uh, new head cell grit separator on the left is what that will look like, uh, in the new splitter box area. As opposed to, we have three vortex grit separators, um, which is shown on the, uh, right side. And that will help us, uh, get a total grit removal and help, uh, feed that to the existing Huber, uh, great classifier unit. Here's a little closer rendition of what that new splitter box and, uh, grit separating head cell, uh, cell will look like. Uh, the three D mock-up on the right there. And it shows some of the, yeah, some part of that is under grade also, so it's a little deceiving how it looks, but, uh, it shows where, um. The wastewater will come into a chamber feed into that, that grit, uh, head cell. and then overflow and then be divided between the three processes. And then the last solution, we're going to, uh, revamp how the EQ lift station functions. We're going to take out the three smaller pumps and we're going to put two larger pumps in to the actual wet well. And, uh, the effluent from those pumps will go directly over to the ditch and empty out into um, either or ditch. And then, uh, where the valve vault is, uh, at the top of the first overhead view, um, we're going to put the two smaller pumps in and we're going to, that, that'll be used to uh, handle my, our regular like, uh, de-watering press water and stuff that normally goes out there from operations and not, not influent bypass. So at this point, uh, you know, preliminarily I'll ask for a little questions and then like Ken said, we'll discuss some of the, the new, uh, new issues that kind of came up.
Questions?
Okay.
Any questions or thoughts? Obviously there's a lot involved in this, this project and we did present the feasibility uh, study that neuroengineering, uh, put together many months ago. Uh, that study and the, uh, the extensiveness, the degree of that study really allowed us to expedite the design process here. Uh, you know, like Tim just, just worked through, there, there's a lot of issues that, that have, uh, primarily maintenance wise and somewhat operations wise that have existed for a long time that that staff have dealt with. And I commend Tim for really taking on, you know, dealing with stuff. You know, like you saw the, the four feet of grit in the one oxidation ditch, you know? Obviously that didn't accumulate, uh, since Tim nor I have been here. That's been in the bottom of that, that grit's been in that ditch for many, many years. So no, Tim's doing a great job addressing these issues, but really they need to fully be addressed for the long term. So that's the, the gist of this project. Now if there's any thoughts, questions? Otherwise we'll talk a little bit about, uh, project delivery. Uh, like I'd mentioned, you know, Tim and, and neuroengineering have really been pushing to get this out for bids. Uh, knowing that, uh, you know, the earlier we get it out, uh, in the spring typically, winter months, the better bids you're, you're going to get. Uh, the one thing that even comes into play more so, you know, that we learned last fall was, uh, the passing of the bonding bill. And, uh, there's a, there were a fair number of water wastewater projects on the shelf that were then funded by the, the bonding bill that was passed by the estate legislature last fall during that special sess- session, I believe in August or September. Uh, so that, uh, you know, really, uh, you know, we were hoping to get this out for bids. Uh, the one thing that might bring our bid opening of February 3rd into question and these documents, they're, they're post, I'm thinking of the wrong one. It's my, my, yeah, we're off to March 16th. Excuse me, I'm thinking of the wrong. We were targeting earlier, even earlier a while ago, but, uh, we had to slide things back to work through some, some design aspects. And then, uh, the primary thing that, uh, we realized we needed to address was, uh, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Uh, basically staff and the consultant engineer, uh, gave a, you know, for lack of better terms, that the PCA a heads up. Uh, and, uh, what we learned from the PCA when we were just basically giving them a courtesy cursory, you know, heads up that this project was going to be put out for bids in the near future is that, uh, they might have some concerns about the magnitude of the project with respect to our current wastewater effluent permit being expired and not being renewed. That's not due to staff by any means, you know? Uh, we've been waiting for some time for the PCA to arrive at some, some rule, some rulemaking to, to be cleared up and that would impact our, our permit, our new permit. Uh, that's supposedly going to be happening this summer. But in the meantime, what we're learning is that per some interpretations by, uh, PCA staff that, uh, uh, our project might be held up. Uh, we're, we're trying to make some clarifications, you know, that, uh, our project is like Tim worked through addressing, you know, existing maintenance needs. And really we're not changing the design treatment intent of the existing facility. Uh, that the treatment mechanisms that exist today will continue to exist. Uh, the treatment capacity that exists today will continue to exist. Uh, we believe there's some verbiage in our permit that allows us to make these improvements, uh, and that we're currently operate, operating under, albeit is expired. So just a heads up to council. Uh, yeah, we're going to keep pushing forward with the design after this public hearing. Uh, and hopefully council approves the two resolutions. We'll continue to shoot for the, uh, the mid-March bid opening. Uh, albeit with a caveat that, uh, we may have some work to do with the PCA along the way here. And that's about it. Project timeframe and project delivery wise at this point. And if there's any thoughts, questions? Tim, anything else?
There anything else for Kent or Tim? Otherwise, uh,
Open up for any-
For public comment? Nobody there, Matt?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I thought this was going to be a pretty hot hearing, but I'll make a motion to, uh, close it.
Well, we're going to be spending $5 million.
I'm not saying it's not a big project. I'm just saying it's not a controversial one.
Exactly. Not assessing anyone.
All right, I'll second the motion. Uh, roll call, uh, Brandon?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Hi. Uh, entertain a motion to approve both resolutions?
I'll make that a motion.
A second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve both resolutions. Any other discussion? Not, uh, roll call, Brandon?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Ken?
No, unless you're going to move on to the next one, I-
Yep. We'll, we'll do that as long as you're standing there. Review of the water wastewater supervisory control and data acquisition. The SCADA system needs assessment report.
Yes, uh, what we're going to do this evening is present, uh, a report that, uh, Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services AE2S, a consulting firm that, that specializes in obviously uh, environmental work primarily. And they've really grown their expertise in the, uh, consulting engineering markets in this region, you know, really the upper Midwest has been an expert in SCADA systems and, uh, you know, improving SCADA systems, implementing them, obviously identifying needs and assessing them. So we were fortunate enough to engage them and, uh, have them put together this report at a very fair cost, uh, uh, the consulting fee that was involved for them. Uh, if you noticed in the packet, there's a, there's a lot of information here. A lot of detail. Uh, we were very impressed with the, the report that was produced. And then, uh, in the end, basically what they called the executive summary, the, the cost estimation worksheets at the back of that report are, are, is very worthwhile information as we, we look forward to, uh, uh, moving on to, uh, improving our SCADA systems at both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment facility. So with that, uh, Tim's got a brief presentation he'll work through, uh, just to basically summarize what's in the report. And then we'll touch on that, uh, that worksheet that was in the backend of the document if there's any questions after, uh, Tim works through his, uh, presentation. Thank you.
Yes, good evening again. Um, I'll preface this by, uh, another reason why we went with AE2S is we felt they had, uh, a pretty familiar of working with our existing system because they did a few years ago help another city, uh, locally with, uh, our same exact, um, hardware that we have and getting them off of that and into a new system. So I thought they had to really closely work with the same materials. So, um, yep. So SCADA, what is it? Um, as Mayor stated, it's supervisory control and data acquisition. Um, it's a centralized system comprised many different components that, uh, works together to monitor and control our processes, basically automation. Um, it allows for local and remote access to these processes. And then also helps us collect data for reporting and troubleshooting. Why do we have a SCADA system? Uh, we need it to effectively manager, manage and, uh, monitor our water wastewater operations. Uh, it gives us a 24/7 remote monitoring and control. Um, if we did not have SCADA systems or automation, we would have to staff both plants 24/7 with personnel. Um, this allows us to, uh, reduce our staffing and have processes run automatically in our absence. Um, it also gives us a real time system information. So, um, it displays for us what's happening, uh, at, at the immediate, uh, time. And, you know, like I said, it, uh, automation increases efficiency. One of those is staffing. Uh, some of the equipment that goes along with, uh, a SCADA system is one, you have to have a server. Um, our server and our client computers have recently, uh, just recently been upgraded. But those are pretty independent pieces of hardware, um, to that which is running, uh, the PLCs that run the processes in the plant. Um, so yeah, it's a computer server and software combination. Um, the server centrally collects and presents the data. And it also allows the operator to control and, and interact with the processes. It also provides the alarming and notification, um, both when we're at the plant and, uh, if we're not present. And then it also provides a data historian and that's very useful. It gives timestamps on, uh, values of data and we use that for trending and, uh, reporting. Another, uh, piece of equipment is an HMI. It's, uh, acronym for human machine interface. And basically it's a device to display the information. And nowadays with touchscreens and stuff, you can also operate from them. It gives a graphical representation of what SCADA is doing, um, what the system is doing. Uh, operators use it to monitor and interact with the system. And they can, uh, be in the form of a desktop workstation, a carry around tablet, or even nowadays on your smartphones. A PLC, uh, that's an acronym for a programmable logic controller. Uh, these are wired to different devices in the field to monitor and control the processes. They control or they convert the, uh, digital and analog systems from those devices to something that, uh, can be interpreted by the operator. They're programmed to control equipment based on sensors in the field. Uh, they operate basically or advanced control. Um, they have tagged and numbered control loops. It also provides alarms and operation requirements to SCADA. It says, uh, what's a high alarm? What, what needs action? Uh, it both re- receives inputs and those are from connected sensors and devices for monitoring. It also provides outputs. So it does the thinking and interpreting of those inputs and tells the equipment, uh, to be doing something, uh, and, you know, equipment that it's controlled. Little bit of PLC continued, uh, types of inputs and outputs or referenced as IO. Uh, digital IO is basically an on off action. So you either get a digital one or a digital zero. This is something that basically just starts and stops like motors and pumps. And they're usually controlled by some type of on off switch floats, uh, or similar. Um, analog IO, um, and you need different modules for each of these. They're interpreted differently. Basically uses a, a, a small current of electricity. It feeds a, uh, an input device. And it uses four to 20 milliamps and gives a range of zero to 100% usually. Um, where 50% would be then like 12 milliamps. So it's something that's variable. Um, it controls, monitors those items like temperature, speed, level, pressure, et cetera. The plant master PLC, that monitors and controls both, uh, the wastewater and water processes. It interacts with telemetry master for control of the, uh, outlying PLCs. And it provides SCADA with all the plant information. Talking about telemetry, we have a telemetry master PLC. What's telemetry? It's what connects any of the remote sites to that central master. Um, it automates communications. It allows for alarms, runtimes, levels, flows, uh, equipment status, control, et cetera. Um, and it provides the information to SCADA from the remote sites. Uh, and, and be- between the remote sites and the main PLC. And how data is sent and received, usually it's via phone. We use radio like in the case of our remote lift stations. Uh, fiber optic are among the plant, uh, buildings and could be cellular. Um, it does polling. So what, what that master PLC does is it will systematically or step by step have communications with each of the remote sites. And then once that series of communications is done, it starts it all over again. Um, a watchdog is basically something in there that says, if I don't see somebody reporting back like it should, um, I'm going to give an alarm that says I must not have communication or we need to check something out. So, um, an example of this, we have a new telemetry master that's already in place. And it is used for pulling the new lift station control centers as our rehabilitations have occurred over the last four years. So those new control stations use a newer PLC and thus had to talk to a different master. SCADA reliability, this is something we desperately need. Um, it is critical that we can trust our system. Uh, as I said, this system controls, uh, the processes for almost 16 hours a day and all through the weekend. So when we're absent, so we need, uh, basically to be able to trust this system. The system information alarms are essential for sustainability and service of the SCADA system. And basically our, uh, US Filter brand hardware is obsolete. Uh, it fails regularly. The programming isn't being supported anymore because it is so obsolete and replacement parts are non-existent. Um, as an example, the last time I tried to get a bunch of the, uh, existing PLCs that we use, US Filter brand, uh, it was almost like a black market. I had to know somebody who knew somebody who maybe got it out of a trunk. So, um, we're, we're barely getting by and, and I'm not being facetious with that. Before that, it was eBay and, uh, if I peg US Filter on eBay anymore, nothing comes up. So it's non-existent. Uh, so this makes this situation pretty desperate. Uh, SCADA replacement criteria, uh, as most people would put it. Uh, how to know when things need to be replaced, basically non-functioning, if it's no longer manufactured or not meeting your current needs and check marked all three for us. This is an example of our existing remote lift station controls. The, uh, they're called the LC, uh, 150 processors. So this is an example of what we have been replacing in the last four years when we go out and do a rehabilitation. So we're moving away from these, uh, older PLCs. And basically when we take these out, we don't throw them away because we still have six, seven stations that use this equipment. We keep them as good spares because they're no longer attainable. And basically when they're all replaced, we might be able to earn a little money if somebody's still on this. earn a little money if somebody's still on this system. So this is an example of what we're moving to. This is one of our newer stations. We're incorporating a lot of different ideas into this, where we have a touchscreen display. Every station cabinet is being modeled the same way. On the left side is low voltage or 24 volts DC. On the right side is high voltage, so we're making it a two-door cabinet. Basically, that's for safety. That's for some of the new electrical code regs that are out there under NFPA 70E. So it's to protect our operators. And basically, all these are looking the same. When these stations were put in over the years, it was the lowest bidder. Different companies made them, so they all look different. They have different components in them, which is hard to stock spare parts for, and just troubleshooting is a nightmare. So these are going to be as similar as can possibly be for all 11, basically 12 of our remote lift stations. Also, part of this proposal is to go forward with replacing in as soon as possible during the scope of this project, the remaining seven lift station control cabinets, so we get them all over to being on the new controls and don't have to deal with the old stuff whatsoever. This is another example of, on the left, some of the other types of obsolete PLCs that are just in different processes within the plants, not necessarily strictly SCADA communications. The one on the left is our main lift station with just a gob of wires there and stuff, too. And on the right is actually one of our stations, which will be replaced hopefully in the Headworks project. This one is in the preliminary building, and you can kind of see what a nightmare that one is also. So that was the hardware, you know, the kind of the wiring and the equipment that needs to be touched. There are also, all of that equipment reports into a control software, which then turns it into displays and information that we can interpret. And so you have software programming. Some of the questions are, you know, are we getting the right information? What do we want? What do we need? Are they the same things? What do we need to know? And then is there a clear distinction between, you know, just needing information or something that is in need of being an alarm? Do you really need to know it? Does it impact or improve the operation? Do you need to simply acknowledge the item taking place, or does it take some action? That would be, you know, something that needs an alarm. Can it or should it be disabled? When? By whom? Or why would it be disabled or need to be disabled? And does it provide for remote operation or times that maybe it shouldn't, you know, where you don't want to have something remotely recognized if it's something that really the operator should go lay eyes on? So in the terms of software, this is our existing SciTech brand software program, which is running today, and is the display. So it's just one page of many at the wastewater plant, and it kind of shows how this software shows a lot of detailed pictures with, you know, shadows that are cast right and 3D. But basically, up at the top, the information you're getting, there's just a lot of green normals and things that can be, hey, if it's an alarm, then tell me, and tell me what the alarm is. I don't need to see, you know, 5,000 normals. I need to know basically digital or numeric information, and then if and what is an alarm. So this is just an example of what something in the future might look like, a little more multifunctional, you know, not so fancy on the picture, really more kind of a plan diagram looking thing, but lots of information on here, and, you know, information where it's necessary. So it's basically pretty right up front and self-explanatory. And then on the side, you can see many different toggle buttons where you can get to any page in the system from any page. And basically, down below are control loops that are really multifunctional, and that's more on the next page. This is an example of when I was at the paper mill, we went through a change in systems, and I was in on the design of some of this, so pretty intimate knowledge of these. So this is like an example of a control loop for one parameter. So this is like a storage tank, and it shows that you have all the control over where do you want your alarms, where do you want your set point. You can change that. You can go from auto to manual operation. You can easily see what the output of whatever pump, valve, whatever is. And then there's a space up at the top right. If there's an alarm, you know, you don't have five different things saying normal, low alarm normal, low-low alarm normal, high alarm normal. Basically, if alarm comes up, it pops up in there and says high level, or it says low level, or out of range, or, you know, something like that. I think that is the, well, nope. So one more slide. Beside SCADA communication equipment, AE2S took a look at basically all of the control PLCs in the plants. Different processes came with their own PLCs to monitor and control their equipment, and some of those haven't been touched. And then they're of a many variety brand, and so there was some thought given as to maybe it's a time to touch those, get them all into something more generic, more universally supported. And so some of those examples are some of the, you know, JWC brand grinder compacters, the Baycore drum screens, our ash gravity de-watering press controls, what operates the watering presses. Also, the Suez MBR process operates on its own PLC, which then transfers information over to a SCADA PLC, which SCADA could read right from the Suez MBR PLC. Project we did last year, Trojan UV 3000, we piggybacked our SCADA communication right onto their PLC, and it's been successful. The main and hats lift station pumping controls. And then at the water plant, the biofilter system runs on one separate process PLC, and the RO system does the same thing. So all of these are looked at and being kind of picked and chose as to which ones we'll replace at this time possibly with this project. So... There's any questions for me with what's been covered so far?
Thanks, Tim. You know, this is a lot of information here. Yeah, Tim did a great job there, you know, giving us SCADA 101. And yeah, I don't know if we need to get into a whole lot more detail. Like I mentioned earlier, and it's really this blue and white table. I don't even think you need to bring it up, Matt, for that matter, but it just reiterates the fact that a lot of time and effort that was put into this study, not only by the consultant themselves, but they obviously worked with, you know, Tim on the wastewater treatment facility front and Eric Levine on the water treatment plant front. You know, these are two systems. The SciTech system, you know, it's basically two systems that are ran through the same programming. You know, obviously, there's different hardware at the water treatment plant and different hardware at the wastewater treatment facility. But it's a SciTech system that was implemented when the water treatment plant was built and put online in 2006. And likewise, there was a separate SCADA project tied to the MBR improvements out at the wastewater treatment facility back in 2008. That's when it went online. So, you know, that system isn't too old. You know, we're talking about, you know, 14, 12 years or so on, respectively, on each front. You know, there was a significant investment that was made at the time, not only on the programming, the SciTech system, but also on the hardware that was put in place. We feel we've gotten our useful life out of it. You know, I always hope to stretch things out as much as you can, but like Tim's mentioned, we're at a point now where we're just getting concerned that we're not going to find, you know, basically, the computer modules, the PLCs that run these, the system that's in place today due to the lack of support that's out there. So, yeah, now's the time. We've had some discussions internally with respect to funding this project. Talking to Matt and Andy, you know, we're looking at possibly bonding for a portion of this project also. Obviously, would involve some bonding funds, some water treatment plant reserve funds, and then some wastewater reserve funds. And what we're looking forward to doing is going back to AE2S, who did this very detailed study, needs assessment, and requesting a final design proposal from them in the very near future, so they can get the plans and specifications put together. You know, there's obviously a lot of detail to that with what's involved here, and hopefully, you know, getting this out for bids, you know, summertime, maybe late summer, early fall, and then getting it started this fall as far as construction. We want to tie this project, parallel it with the Headworks Improvement Project that we discussed earlier, where we're putting the control work into the SCADA project and not having to do the control improvements that would be necessary within the Headworks project if that was standing alone. So obviously, we think we can get some, you know, some better economies of scale and, you know, just look at the controls, the SCADA system comprehensively within this project, and then not have to worry about some of that work falling into the, you know, the Headworks project, and that would be a subconsultant, you know, and such, built into that subconsultant subcontractor, probably both a programmer and an integrator within that project. So the hope is to get this moving right along, to get it going this fall. By the time the Headworks project needs to start involving some programming, we hope that this is far enough along where those two projects can parallel each other very well going into the winter months and next spring. So there's a lot going on here. You know, we appreciate your time. You know, it's got, I guess, probably a 200 or 300 level class on wastewater operations this evening, so appreciate that. And yeah, do you have any questions? We're not looking for any action on this. Like I said, we wanted to present this report. The next action on this project front would be that final design proposal. That will exceed $50,000, so that will have to come to council directly and hopefully at the next council meeting.
Well, it does seem like it's time for update for all that stuff, so it's a good project.
Yeah, I should just mention quickly, and, you know, I commend Tim and staff, and, you know, not only on the wastewater front, but the water treatment plant front, Mr. Levine. Not so much on the water tree, obviously, the water treatment plant was basically new, out of the box in 2006. You know, in '08 at the wastewater plant, we implemented the membrane bioreactor treatment train and this new SCADA system. But, you know, there were a lot of things, like Tim was touching on earlier, within his presentation on the Headworks project and the issues that that addresses, that, you know, have existed for a long time. And, you know, we obviously went through a period of time, you know, around the recession, you know, back in that '08, '09, and even prior to that with what happened on the industry side of things locally here that put our water and wastewater funds in a tough position. So primarily on the wastewater side of things, we were in preservation mode for a long period of time, you know, and there was obviously the sales tax that was implemented some time ago that thankfully it was because, you know, we, just to address, you know, operations and routine maintenance for a period of time, we needed that revenue stream. However, we weren't building reserves significantly enough to really take on the true needs specifically at the wastewater plant. So we believe, you know, talking to Andy, we're finally in a position to do so. It might involve a little debt just due to the magnitude of these improvements, but it's a good thing.
All right. Anything else for Kent or Eric?
For Tim, I'm sorry.
Wow. I'm trying to solicit the FPCA for some CEU orders for you guys. You can probably take your Class D license now. Thank you much.
All righty. Thanks, guys. Matt, we have to table the next one?
Yeah, I'd ask the council to table that, too. I suppose the next meeting at this point. So we need a full council to take action on that item.
Entertain a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table it.
I can second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to table. Any other discussion? Roll call. Brandon?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Chad?
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries. We do not have any new business governance. We have the minutes reports from committees, boards, or commissions. We have the Hutchinson-Housen and redevelopment authority board minutes from December 15th, 2021. Is Mr. Olson still there, or did he leave?
Nope, he's left. He had to take off, too.
Chief Gibson left. All righty. Does Tim have anything else for us?
No, I think you earned enough for me tonight.
I wasn't going to say it that way, but thank you. Kent, does he have anything else?
Yeah, he does.
All right.
Just briefly, and following up on an email I sent out to council this afternoon in regards to US Highway 212 down by the two-lane gap areas on either side of Cologne. So, yeah, at the Southwest Transportation Corridor meeting a week or so ago, they produced an information sheet on the westerly gap segment, basically between Cologne and New Oregon, America. You know, so they're starting to make some headway. Carver County is leading the cause. They are all about a third of the way funding-wise to the total project cost of, I think it was about $68 million, they have estimated. So they have a ways to go, but Carver County is very, I guess, adamant about delivering this project on the timeframe that they're approximating at this point, which, you know, basically shown it being delivered, being started in 2022 at some point and being finalized in 2024. Like I mentioned in the email, the easterly gaps between Carver Fleet Farm area there on the east end and then out to Cologne, basically, that may start construction this fall in '21. I think I might be hopeful at this point, but we'll see what happens. I think ideally, or probably more than likely, it'll mirror the other project where it starts in the spring of '22 and gets delivered over two construction years and gets finalized, gets completed in a fall of '23. So, yeah, good news on that front. Yeah, thank, like we've said before, thank Carver County. This isn't MNDOT's doing. Yeah, they're a participant on this, in this, because it's a roadway, but if it wasn't for Carver County and the efforts they're doing down on the 212 front, none of this would be happening. So with that, otherwise, on the transportation highway front, just learned from the county engineer a couple days ago, and I just gave you a heads up, you might see this, and it's a project that's going to involve us, is the implementation of a roundabout on Casal 115 and Jefferson Street. So we don't have Jefferson Street under city jurisdiction all the way So, we don't have Jefferson Street under city jurisdiction all the way to one fifteen. There's about four hundred or five hundred feet there, but I believe as part of this project, uh, we'll look to a. The county will be looking to turn back, uh, that very end of Jefferson Street to us, which does make sense now because, uh. The, uh, I'll call it the Harmony River parcel, I believe. Espritian Homes or some other LLC owns that's basically. A sub, subsidiary, you know, subsidiary to Press Homes owns all the way to that intersection. You know, so, uh, that entire farm field to the east of Harmony River up to Jefferson, so it. It does make sense for that to be in city jurisdiction and just clean up, uh, you know, that corridor. So we'll be a partner in that project. Obviously we'll just have the one leg involved. Uh, and look at what we can do for access and, uh, possibly trail improvements and. Uh, the county will start to, uh, administer that design process. More than likely looking at constructing that in twenty twenty-two at this point. And that's part of that whole project corridor that we looked at a couple of months ago. That they were gathering public input on, so it extends from basically the airport. Curves there, you know, where the county fair, uh, grounds back entrances on the west end all the way. You know, through highway fifteen, through Sherwood, through Jefferson, through Adams, uh, over the bridge, through Adams, all the way to twenty-two. So the implementation of that roundabout would be part of that project, hopefully in twenty twenty-two. Other than that, um. Couple of things, uh, Mr. Olson and I've been talking about that at our meetings is, uh, snow removal. Uh, things are going fairly well. Uh, you know, our staffing on the, on the snow removal front has changed. You know, a fair amount going into this year. Different people have different roles, you know. Uh, we're, we're getting younger. Uh, parks department has gotten a bit younger. Uh, uh, over the last year or two, so, uh, they're obviously involved, so. We're, we're coming up to learn, well, some people are coming up the learning curve and, and John does a, a heck of a good job. You know, bringing people up the learning curve, so I don't think, uh, what, what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing a little bit are. Our operation isn't as seamless as, you know, John expects it to be, but it's, it's pretty dang good regardless, so. Uh, bear with us. If you see something or anybody sees something, uh, let us know. Uh, you know, there might be a snow pile where it shouldn't be, or, you know, we might be. Up into a boulevard and stuff of that nature, so we just need to bring some people up the learning curve. Then lastly, tree pruning and, uh, removals. Uh, we're making a, a very. You know, strong effort to address some tree removals this winter and, uh. And do all of our pruning in-house, so obviously that'll be governed by how much snow and ice. We get over the remaining, uh, winter months here, but, uh, just want to stress that people take caution. You know, these, these guys are out there, they're wearing hearing protection. They're working around equipment. Uh, it's tough for them to see. Uh, you know, when they're pulling branches around and, and getting them back into the chipper and such, so. Yeah, I, we were talking about that the other day. We just want people to take care and, you know. When they're going by that operation, you know, some of the streets are. Yeah, I won't say they're narrow, but that operation takes up a fair amount of the street width and we just, people, we need people to have some due care as, uh, they drive by. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Cam. Brandon, let's start with you tonight.
There, sorry. Um. I really don't have anything. I don't know, uh, if it's appropriate or not, but I was just gonna ask if we, if I could maybe offer a prayer for Mary's. Situation. Um, and if it's not, that's fine. I'll just add her to my prayers later.
I have no problem with it. How about you, Dave? Chad?
Go ahead, Brandon.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with, uh, Mary and her husband and the rest of their Christians family. Um, pray that you be with her, uh, husband's doctors, medical staff, and we pray for a swift healing and recovery. And wellness and peace. Um, all of this and anything else that you see that, uh. We and the Christians may need, we ask in Jesus' name. Thank you. Amen.
Thanks, Brandon, for that. Uh, Dave, you have anything?
No, I do not. Everything's running as smooth as silk.
Outstanding. Chad?
I did not have anything extra tonight as well.
Thank you. Uh, Matt?
Um, just a reminder, we do have a workshop before our next council meeting. Um, that's to discuss the general fund balance policy. Um, and then, uh, we did conduct, uh, finalists interviews for the PRC. Or the Park and Rec and Community Ed Director Position late last week and, uh, should be making a decision this week on that, so that, that. That news should come out hopefully later this week. That's it for me.
Thank you, Matt. Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Uh, the last thing you read was, uh, minutes and reports, uh, committee reports was housing development. And they got that listed as twenty twenty-one in December for the twenty twenty. You might want to change that. Thank you.
Good catch, Dave. Then, you know, time flies by too fast already. We don't wanna, we don't wanna get it up that fast, so. Uh, you know, I really don't have anything else, uh, just, uh. Be safe everyone and, uh, have a good evening. Uh, entertain a. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Brandon to adjourn. Roll call, Brandon?
Hi.
Dave? Chad?
Hi.
Hi, we're adjourned. Good evening, everyone.